Okay. Welcome to the Selectmen's Public Meeting and we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know it's true for him, I don't know about her.
Well, I think we should hold off on that one because that's new.
Mr. Chairman, the Board just came out of a non-public session under RSA 91A32C, and I would move that we seal the minutes of that meeting until such time as the opinion of the majority of the Board is to unseal the minutes.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll do a non-public?
I would move to approve the Selectmen's non-public and public meeting minutes dated June 19th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move down to Schedule Business A, new fire rescue station. Project update. Project's moving along. They finished pouring the apparatus bay today, and they're going to continue working on it and get it done. I think the new date is, I think you were saying about a month? Month to a month and a half it should be completed.
And that's mainly because it takes 30 days for the concrete to cure, right?
Right, and the apparatus base, 30 days before they can put a truck or a vehicle on it.
And my thing is, you know, these, anyone who's ever had a house or anything like that built, you always have a target date, but the target date is almost never. If you can show me a contractor who finished early, like, I want to meet that guy. But the, I mean, I think it's, we're targeting May for the longest time, we're now into July, it's almost done. It is what it is. People are going to maybe say things like it's taking too long, but in my opinion, things happen, and the most important thing is, you've heard the thing, you want it done fast or done right, so I think we're getting it done right. Just my humble opinion.
Okay. Okay, we'll move to B, quote on moving security cameras.
So, the last time you asked the Fire Chief to come back with moving the existing cameras from the old station to the new station, he did get a quote for that, and it's on there, and it's going to cost $1,178 to move the existing cameras to the new station, and that includes two monitors and brackets.
And this is going to come out of the...
What can you say?
There were two buckets we were talking about.
Yeah, was this coming out of the...
I wrote it down, hold on. I think we were thinking the general government building, because that wasn't part of the bond.
I think actually, I don't think we decided that was coming out of, because we didn't know the money, but we didn't know how much.
But that's what I mean, we had two buckets we were talking about, general government buildings, I think we're also talking about the rental fees.
Right.
General government, what's that looking like right now?
We haven't really touched it since the last time, I think I told you at the last meeting, it was about $40,000.
$40,000?
Mm-hmm.
I would move to approve the costs of $1,178 to move the cameras and pull it out of the general government and buildings fund.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Move Internet and phone service.
So, I've been waiting on Comcast to give me a quote for having the service overlap as per the request from the Fire Chief, and I've had a couple emails in to her and a couple of phone calls, and I still haven't gotten a response. So, basically, what the Chief would like to do is to have the Internet access at both locations, so that where there, there'll be some overlap. He was looking at it four months, but like I said, I'm still waiting to get a quote from the Comcast.
Okay, so we'll put that on the next agenda?
Yep. What I'll do is I'll let you know too what it is ahead of time, once you get in touch with me.
Okay.
For that as a phone service, I don't think we can do an overlap, it would have to be a new service, so that's, I mean, if we could set a target date, then they need at least 30 days to move the line. So, when we figure out what day we actually want to take ownership, then we can target for that date.
Well, even if we get a new business number for the new fire station, in the interim or the parallel, if you will, they could even do a call for it if they needed to.
Well, she'd really use the same phone number.
Yeah.
They're just talking about moving the Internet over and connecting the phone service.
No, Diane was just talking about phone as well.
I was talking about the phone service. The phone service, you're going to do that, you're going to have two phone numbers that you'll have to pay for, and then, I don't know what that would cost as far as, because you're talking about a new phone service.
Right.
Not a move anymore, so you're going to incur more costs.
I'd say wait until they're ready to move, then, because you don't want to change the phone number.
If we're technically a new customer, because this is, would be a new...
This is EarthLink.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, no.
No.
So, if we had, like I said, if we had a target date, we could say, well, shoot for that, and then, we could probably go one or two, three days, you know, one way or the other.
Now, do we use EarthLink at the police station?
Do we what?
Use EarthLink at the police station?
Yep.
Okay.
So, just something to consider, that it does take 30 days for these to be done.
Okay. Anybody else have any more questions on that?
No, because our only concern is that we don't have a time period where we have no service in either location.
Yeah.
That we can't afford to have.
Right, right, and I think the idea was to try and get the Internet and the phone service set up where they can just go right there and not, you know, because you're going to be moving cameras, you're going to be, you know, removing different things to make that building work. Yeah.
Okay.
How did they handle it with the police station when they did that move?
Wasn't here, not sure.
Oh, no, it was a secret.
Okay, we'll move on. John looks real off a board out there, so why don't we jump down to C, peddler's permit to sell food on town property? John?
Oh, thank you.
We'll get you out of here, so you don't have to...
Get a long trip home.
Yeah.
I thought that was last, couldn't remember. Give me a second.
Okay, we'll lose our one audience member, that's fine.
Well, I'm here because it's been more than two months since I applied for a Hawkers' Peddler's License through the Town of Newton. Now, I understand, this is probably something that nobody has ever asked for before. All my paperwork has been approved by three different sections of the town, including the State of New Hampshire, being verified that all my paperwork that I presented was up-to-date and proper, and basically, everybody's saying, "Not my job, not me," and I don't know. So, I'm here to try to find out what we can do to make this happen. The Health Department of this town, Health Department gentleman, I don't know his name, I'll start in the beginning, I turned all the paperwork over to the Police Department, about 12 pages of all my licenses and important pieces of paper that it needed to be, including the pieces of paper for the Hawkers' Peddler's License of this town. That was turned over to the Health Department, Health Department verified with the State of New Hampshire that everything is perfect, up-to-date, brought it back to the Police Department, Police Department says it's not us that turns this, that signs for that permit, it's the Health Department. So, it went back to him, he said, "Nope." And now, I'm here because somebody has, again, pointed fingers of somebody else to, "Not my job." They said to come to you guys, and I'm really just trying to find out why it's taking longer than two and a half months.
Well, the application for permit that you filled out, we got a copy of that for this meeting, and that does fall under the Board of Selectmen for approval. Of course, having the Health Department do their part and et cetera definitely makes it easier for us to make a decision, especially since there is food involved. I'm looking at your permit, and there's just a couple of blanks that I would like to build in, if you will, such as where, I mean, this is to solicit, and I just want to know where. It's on town property, well, I mean, town property is obviously town-wide. I can't see you soliciting, say, the Bush Reservation, if you will, or in the middle of the Peanut Trail, but I could be wrong, maybe you want to be there. Do you have an idea of the locations in town that you want to be able to peddle?
No, I didn't, I don't have a copy of that form that you have in front of you, I believe that I already put on there, that I was looking at the time during Memorial, before Memorial Day when I turned in the paperwork, to be able to look at the town beach, because my cart is a push cart. I'll bring these around. These are just pictures of the cart. As you can see with the red cart, it's a push cart, even though it's electric, it's not a problem, like, I've already changed everything over, it's small and easy to operate. And I think originally on the paperwork, I might have put down that I was looking at the town beach, which of course during Memorial Day would have been a very busy day, 4th of July, a very, very busy day. And that's, I was told I just have to get the license if I wanted to sell food down there. Nobody knew that it was supposed to be part of the Selectmen or the Board, because it wasn't written anywhere on that paperwork. So, if that's the case, it probably would have been a lot sooner if any of that paperwork had been notified to the Police Department, the Health Department, everybody else, there was no notification of anywhere on there who it goes to.
Yeah, so, John, just to clarify, the application for permit that you filled out was the permit to peddle Solicited Goods Where's a Merchandise, which is under the Police Department, they do that, that's usually for like door-to-door, that's sort of typically in our history.
Tell them they know where the person is located.
But there's also another box there for permit for use of town parks, fields, recreation area, conservation, et cetera. That's the part that comes to us, because you're looking for permission to, if you were looking to do it on your property, for example, in front of your house, you wouldn't need to come in front of us. But because you want to do it at the town beach, you need to come to us. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand, but I think, wasn't there only a check one box?
Nope.
Like I said, I don't have a copy of it, so...
It doesn't say select one or anything like that, there's just four boxes to check off. You actually needed, you were actually applying for both types of permits, the permit to peddle and the permit for use, and that's not an excuse, but it could be one of the explanations for the delay, for it not getting to us.
The other thing I would add, and you said it at the beginning, is, I don't, you said you probably never had anything like this before.
In this town.
Meaning us.
Yeah, and likely not.
And so, there's no precedent that I'm aware of, so I would, I would kind of, kind of poll the Board right now and say, "How many Board members are in favor of this sort of business, you know, being at the town beach selling hot dogs like that?"
I don't have a problem with it.
We used to have a truck, we used to have a truck years ago that used to go around the businesses, Porky's, I think it was, and he did the same thing, he'd go to, when it was Jim House Chevrolet, he'd go up there and serve lunch to people and pocks and stuff like that, so, it happened, but it happened, I think I was 16 at the time, so it's been a while since the last time.
Hundred years.
Yeah, close to it.
So, my thing would, would be, because I'm kind of on the fence, because I don't, I don't know whether people would embrace it or not, maybe they would, but you don't know till you try, so that's why I tend to lean towards a yes, but the thing I'd want to be careful with is, is not to kind of sign up for a lifetime deal to do this, you know, just kind of try it and see, see what happens, and then, if, if we were to continue beyond, like, next year, we could talk again, but the other thing too is, I would be worried about is, and you're probably aware of this, but Newton Baseball makes a lot of money to support themselves by selling concessions at the, at the fields at Greeney Park, so I wouldn't want to see you there, because that would kind of...
I understand, that's...
Or at least, not during, not during, not during...
I would need permission from them anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
And therefore, that's moot.
And that's one of the reasons I was asking about locations, so, if we had, say, a schedule or a tentative schedule, if you will, or just Mondays through Fridays here, special occasions there, sort of thing, the application for permit does have an expiration, which means it wouldn't be open-ended, so you would have to reapply...
The State of New Hampshire has a, has a one-year Hawkers' Peddler's License, all my licenses are one-year, except for my food service license, which is a five-year, but even the State of New Hampshire has a one-year contract for a service ending one year after I apply for it.
And I do see your 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, which is good, so that we know approximately when you'll be there and when you won't. There's no days, so I don't, it could be Monday through Sunday, if, you know, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, if so, it'd be nice to, it's also so that if the Police Department gets a call, "Hey, there's, you know, some peddler selling something," they can say, "Well, he's authorized to be there these days this time."
I think that might just be a little bit specific, though, I mean, you know, the State of New Hampshire does not require me to, and I'm just using this as an example, they don't require me to say what days and what's my schedule going to be like. I think that the only reason that the Board would like a schedule is to find out where I'm going to be and what time. The Hawkers' Peddler's License is just basically to do the job, not where I'm going to be.
Right, but this is permission to use town property, and that we have always gotten dates, times, durations, sort of things, for when people are using town property, and again, it's because it is town property, all town people are invited to use the properties, I'm not saying you're going to be preventing them from doing that, but it's, if any resident were to have an issue with where you were located or when you were located, the permit could show that you were authorized to be there.
Okay, Jim, you have something to say?
This Board has worked hard to bring or to allow small entrepreneurs to start businesses in town, they have the recent trash hauling, I think this is another example of somebody trying to improve their life through small entrepreneurship. I know, I have one. Therefore, I would make a motion that we award a peddler's permit with a permit to sell at the town beach only. I'm not giving times or days, because that's something, quite honestly, this gentleman is going to go down there, probably the first week, go down Monday through Friday at certain times, go down Saturday and Sunday at certain times. I don't want to restrict somebody to say, "Yeah, those are the only times that you can go," when he finds that, well, you know, during the week, the only time is like from 11 to 1, and then it might pick up again at 4, whereas on weekends, he might want to be down there for from 8 to dusk, so...
His permit request already has 8A to 8P.
Right.
It's not saying he has to be there.
That was, that was one of those long motions.
The motion was, it struck me in the front, there was a certain explanation at the end.
Okay, so Diane, you have the motion.
All right, Jim, what was, read his digest version of the motion.
Just the motion itself is to award the peddler's permit and permission to use the town beach for peddling purposes, that doesn't sound right, but you know what I mean.
How about, Jim, move to award a peddler's permit to sell food at town beach?
That works perfectly.
I'll second, but I would want to put an end date on there, like, say, 12/31 or something.
Can I...
I would, I would say October 1st.
I'd like to, okay, Nancy.
Can I just say one thing, a peddler's license is normally all over the town, doesn't have to just be town property. So, the Board can restrict him on our town property, but he can still sell all around town wherever he wants to set up or wherever people allow...
Wherever he's given permission to sell.
Right, right.
The only place he has permission to sell on town property is at the town beach.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Now, if you don't mind for a moment, is that what you're looking for, just to be able to sell at the town beach only, or did you want...
I don't know of any other place in town that, that would be beneficial to have something like that hooked up, I mean, I am new in trying to get all of these, you know, I've had the licenses for four or five years or whatever, first time with the town, I don't know where else it would be beneficial for me to get this town property.
Okay, I'd like to do it, but I, I'd rather not restrict to the town beach, because we have a blood drive coming up, why can't he be out there selling food when you get the blood drive coming on, or when you have the rabies clinic?
There could be opportunities that come up, but the peddler's license allows him to do that, your only concern is on town property.
Well, the fire station's town property when they're doing, that's what I'm saying.
Right, right.
I think if you're going to give him a peddler's license, it shouldn't be restricted.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
The only reason I put in the town beach was of the two places in town where there is regularly a large quantity of people, you have Greeney Park and the town beach. Greeney Park has a concession stand there that is pretty well booked, and we really don't want to see as much as competition is very good...
No, they're done now.
I wouldn't want the youth baseball association thinking that we're, we're trying to undercut them, because they have done a lot of good things there.
Right, but there's other functions that happen down there, I can see not letting them do it during baseball games.
I think I already, I think I already addressed that anyway.
Right, but let me just correct you on that real quick, though, you don't have to get permission from baseball, the town owns the property, not the baseball.
Right.
No, but I would need permission to be there.
Right.
From them, and I...
From the town.
Just from the town.
The town, baseball does not own Greeney Park, the town does.
Baseball has permission from the town to be there.
For the concession stand.
Right.
See, I would have had to, I would have thought that I would ask the concession stand, but I wouldn't do that anyway, that's, that's top.
However, nothing in my motion prevents him from, if the Fire Department says, "You know, we're having a blood drive on Thursday," which I believe they are...
No, we just had it on Friday.
Sorry, I missed it. Anyway, we're having a blood drive next Thursday, can you bring your hot dogs to us instead of going to the beach? I don't consider that violating the spirit of the motion.
Okay.
As opposed to, "Yeah, I'm standing outside Greeney Park and trying to sell hot dogs to people as they walk, as they come in."
Okay.
Could you, would you mind reading back Jim's motion?
Jim, move toward a peddler's permit to sell food at town beach.
So, did you want to rewrite that?
Actually, what I said was, "Award a peddler's permit and give permission to sell at the town beach."
I like that, I'll still second that with the October 1st.
However, I thought it's the Police Department that issues the peddler's permit, reissue the permit to use the town property.
I realize that, but by putting it in this one motion, covers the ability to award the peddler's permit.
Right, he already has it from the Police Department, so...
I think that covers all the bases, the way it's written.
And the expiration date on that was October 1st.
So, he could sell at the fire station if it's, he's saying only at the beach?
With the Fire, with the Fire Chief's permission.
Okay.
Okay, now, that means that if there was, say, a veteran, that's in November, right?
So, without going into all the examples possible of what could happen, I think, I think, just for clarity's sake, and I think where Jim's motion does it, is, you do have a peddler's license that's, we're going to sign off as much as we can tonight, so the peddler's license that you've been waiting for will be a done deal. However, to pedal on certain town properties, you need permission from us to do so, so tonight, we're giving you the permission you wanted to do it at the town beach. If for some reason you decide, "Hey, it's working good at the town beach, and I want to do it at the transfer station," for example...
The month before elections.
You would have to come back to us and say, "Can I do it at the transfer station? Can I do it at Greeney Park? Can I do it at the town hall?"
Yeah, in fact, we might actually like to see you in March at the transfer station.
Exactly, so, I think in a nutshell, you're getting exactly what you're looking for, it's just taking us a long time to figure out the language, so...
The language is simple, it's the interpretation.
Well, that's it, yeah.
And expiration, do we want October or just December 31st?
I said October 1st simply because the town beach closes, I believe, on October 1st.
Yeah, but, but it's still, you can still swim there, but it's still warm though.
Can you make it December 31st, like, the end of the year?
Excuse me?
December 31st, the end of the year? Is it, there are 31 days in December, right?
No, as, as...
I forget.
I believe I have not misread the sign down there, I've seen it enough times.
Oh, I won't be at the beach then.
The town beach is closed on, the last day, or the, yeah, the last day is October 1st.
Right, but if November 3rd weekend, it's going to be 90 degrees, they're going to have people down there swimming anyway, so...
Yeah, but the...
If he finds that there is a success to this, and I hope he does, he can come back and ask us to either extend, extend it, maybe make it an annual, maybe he will come up with some plan, but right now, I'm simply giving him a way to get his cart and his hot dogs out in front of the public on a regular basis, period.
Okay, are you happy with that, John?
I'd like to ask for November 1st, the reason being is Halloween is the 31st of October.
Okay, can we move it to November 1st?
I don't have a problem with that.
I have no problem with it.
One more day.
November 1st.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set, John.
Thank you very much, everything's...
Does the Chief have to sign off on peddling?
Yes.
Peddler's license, and we'll sign off.
But he, he was waiting for us anyway.
We'll let the Chief know November 1st.
Yeah, yeah.
Got that, guys?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, John.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the transfer station, resident requests salvage metal from transfer station. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I read the letter from the townspeople, towns person, who asked about removing metal from the transfer station, and to me, there is much greater liability here than there would have been if it had to be allowed people to take wood from the wood pile.
Right, we've had this request in the past, and it was always denied due to the fact of people climbing up the metal pile, falling, getting impaled by a piece of metal.
This is a decapitation looking for...
Well, I tried to make it more nicely.
And question, the metal pile, is that something that we actually recycle ourselves and get funds for?
Yes.
Can you, do you mind just coming up to a mic?
It was a Warren article years ago that nobody can pick it, that we use and sell and get the money.
And that's my point, is if we allow residents to come in and take away, then we're also taking away revenue from the...
And you told, you were telling me this weekend, right, twice a year, normally you have somebody...
Unless it's, you know, really fills up quick.
Yeah, 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 so there is, you're right, there is a business aspect to it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, there is, you're right, there is a business aspect to it.
I, I have no problem making a motion to deny the request.
I second that motion.
Discussion?
I was quicker on the second.
Seconded by Matt.
Is that a motion, just to deny?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sanitary facilities. I had a.
So, do we need Pete anymore?
Yep.
He might.
He's still on, on the agenda?
Yeah, he's got B and C too.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, now sanitary facilities, which is the bathroom down there. I had an electrician go down there and look at it. He said basically what has happened to it is when it was installed or sometime in between, the owner's manual instructions were up inside the bathroom, inside the incinerator of the toilet, and they caught fire.
Oh!
Melted all the wiring.
Oh, no.
And he looked at it and he basically told me he's really not interested in trying to tear that thing apart and rewire it. So.
So, it's replacing it?
Basically, it would be replacing it, or if we could find another electrician that would, wouldn't mind, excused upon digging in, getting dirty and fixing it.
Probably be taken by another.
At this point, I think we're better off replacing it. I mean, if it was an internal fire that melted wiring, who knows what other damage it has done?
Right, but if we get a new one, then we should probably ask the guy who installed it to take the owner's manual out of it at the time.
Right.
So, so how much, how much would a new one cost? And Pete, you're telling us that you guys prefer the.
Yeah, we prefer the porta potty. New one, same model and everything, $1,869 plus the shipping. I don't know what that would be.
What was that price? I didn't hear, sorry.
Eighteen.
Eighteen sixty-nine.
No place more local that sells it than California?
They're out of Texas. I'd, I'd have to contact them to see if they'd work with those. What is the price of the porta potty per month? It's, it's $880 a year.
Right, and how long did this one last before it died?
At least five years, five, six years.
Exactly. So, the $1,800 versus the $800 per year. Eight times five is $4,000.
Right. Plus all the money that we bring in every week for bulky item fees. I mean, that pays alone for one year plus for the rental fee.
The what?
The bulky item fees, the monies that we get from that.
Yeah.
One week alone pays for a whole year of rental for the.
Right, but that's money we're taking away from the town still.
Yeah, but that money would be taken in, it would be taken in anyways. My point is, is $4,000 for a five-year period or $2,000 for a five-year period. The $2,000 is less expensive.
It's renting a car or buying a car, basically.
Exactly.
So, I, what I would, what I would like to see us do is maybe, and, and I can show you an app to make this easier, but is, is to at least talk to like three electricians, have them look at it and see what they come back with before we go ahead and it sounds like we'd want to replace this thing.
I think Pete already called how many?
I called five electricians and Mike's appliance and none of them want to touch it.
None of them want to touch it.
Nobody wants to touch it?
Right, I had an electrician that I knew went down and looked at it also.
So, is there any, like, if we put it on Craigslist, could we make any, anything back?
Well, you put it in the scrap pile and make some money on the metal.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
Right.
Okay, Jim, Jim has a question.
I was just gonna say, before we start making motions, might I suggest that this has been dead for a couple of years. It's been at least five years that we, it worked. Quite possibly, technology has changed during that time. Can we look into other possibilities of what we might, I mean, we may want to look at a composting, this incinerating, maybe something that is a better fit with what we need for that facility.
The one that's down there is an incinerator.
Right, the, the, the one that died was an incinerator. Maybe it's something that we need to, a composting one maybe is more adequate for what the needs of the town are.
My suggestion would be to research it. We've already got the money and the budget for the porta potty right now. See what we can come up with and have it in next year's budget. Because I don't know how much money is available this year to buy one. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there something you can look into, Pete? What it would cost to replace it?
With the.
Any areas around that have them? Like I said, I, I don't think any electrician's gonna want to get in there and try and repair that thing.
No.
With the, you know, with the little note that when it's budget time, you're gonna be putting around that amount in your budget to do something, you know?
Also, maybe money that we can recoup from the recycling.
Right, as Pete was saying, it's, it's almost like you take some of that money that you're bringing in and you can do it. But, but I think, you know, rule number one is the porta potty thing's not gonna extend beyond this fiscal year.
Exactly.
And, you know, we just can't do that, so.
These can't come from that other account unless it's voted on by the legislative body.
Well, it's not so much taking the money out of the bucket. It's the, it's the balance of the.
So, I'm just wondering, the building that's there that I'm assuming was a separate thing from the actual.
Unit itself, yes.
Yeah, it's a brick building that goes in.
So, the building would stay and you could take out and put in new ones?
Right, it's just like replacing an elotile. You take the old one out, rewire the new one in.
We don't have to replace the building?
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But that building could house any.
Sure.
Number of different units.
Sure.
Okay.
A good resource would be Tiny House Nation. A good resource would be Tiny House Nation. There's a website.
Okay. All right, so you get your homework, Pete?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's move on to the policy on bulk, bulk material.
Mr. Chairman, this is coming from the Joint Loss Prevention Committee.
Management.
Management Committee, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a policy for how we will utilize the bulk containers. Somebody from the board had mentioned opening up the ends and allowing people to deposit. It's all covered. It's been vetted by Primex. It's been vetted by the Joint Loss Management.
Guy had a good idea, huh?
And.
Who was that?
Everybody received a copy of it last Wednesday, so they should have had plenty of time to read it. Are there any questions about it?
I will move to adopt the bulk container policy, NSC 0718-32 for inclusion in the safety policy.
Second?
Discussion? You'll see in this, right, Pete? I think you were in the email. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Close.
All right, you're all set with you, Pete, unless you want to hang around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, D. Angel Boyle taxed deeded property map 2-4-37.
That needs to be scheduled.
Right, so, this is on because we've been dealing with the couple of people besides Mr. O'Boyle. It's the Eight Wilders Grove Road piece where they tore down the house, never rebuilt, didn't pay the taxes. We took the taxes in 2015. And they have until July 30th to come in and request from the board in writing to purchase the property back, pay all the back taxes and, and get the property because it's within that three year period. Mary Joey and I have dealt with the attorneys, dealt with the person who was working on behalf of the owner and then the ex-wife. She had an attorney come in. They were all told to come to the 17th meeting. I tried to get them on the last meeting that we had before we went on our little break. They said it wasn't good for them, but they'd come into the 17th and there's nobody here, so. And we told them, this is the last meeting that you can meet with the board to do this before the expiration date. Because once the 30th comes, you have a right to sell it or do whatever you want with it because your three years is up.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not here, so. But they also were told that they can't build on it again because the zoning doesn't, and you have like a year or something to rebuild. And they didn't. And so, I kept telling them, go to the planning board, go to the building department. You can't build on this property. And so, maybe they finally realized that they couldn't and that's why they're not here. I don't know.
Okay, well, they had ample opportunities to be here and.
Absolutely.
So, what do we need? How about a motion to begin the process of selling?
Well, we can't till the 30th, right?
Yeah, you'd have to wait until the three years is up.
July.
But we're doing.
30th of July?
Yes.
I thought you meant June.
No, we're doing a list. The assessor's doing a list for you guys to look at and go through and, and decide which ones you want to might put on the market this year.
And it, it seems like the property owner was looking for somebody else to represent him here?
Yeah, he had a friend who wanted to build on it and he had a letter from the owner saying that I'm gonna put him, what was, what's the word they used?
Proxy.
Yeah. But then the, the ex-wife got involved, was working with the, the ex-husband, and then that must have fell through. They both had attorneys and I don't know where they are. They're not here.
Okay. Well, they're not here, so let's move on to E. 2019 PA-28 form.
I'll move to sign the PA 28.
And just for my clarification, what exactly is that form?
It's the inventory that we used to do years ago for who lives in the house, what animals you have, did you purchase new land state fund?
Okay.
We stopped, we abolished it in 1993. The townspeople voted to do away with it. So, but they always ask and we always have to reply. So, you're just signing the form saying, no, we're not going to do it.
Ah, thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Sorry.
Need a second?
Second.
I'm in the motion for.
Okay, Matt's second. Discussion? Have we already had? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, F. Gil Library restroom flooring. Who knows about that one?
Jim can speak on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I went after the Joint Loss Management Committee met last Wednesday. There were some issues that were brought up by the librarian regarding possible safety issues in the, at the library.
In the restroom.
The major one on the interior was the restroom floor. The restroom floor appears to be a peel and stick vinyl good that was put down. Water was excessive water hit the floor in the restroom and it caused the adhesive to fail. Same thing happened with the cove molding around the base of the walls. I suggested that one of the things that they probably should do would be to dry it out completely. We could have some, the, the vinyl is pretty much heavy duty contact paper. However, it can be peeled up because of the moisture that is trapped underneath it. It needs to be retracted, the area dried out, fresh mastic placed, and then the vinyl needs to be put back down and the cove needs to be reattached.
So, basically, it needs a new floor? It just needs a new linoleum?
New floor covering.
New floor covering, okay.
Yeah, it actually, it didn't look like it was that difficult a job that possibly our.
Tony looked at it. He said there's no way to get it to lay down again because it's all curled and, and it's up against the wall, so it's not where anybody's gonna trip over it. I suggest to put in a board down, maybe nailing something on it for now. Because we, you know, I told them we don't have the funds right now, so.
Yeah, I, quite honestly, the, the cove molding, which is another peel and stick product that appears to come in two-foot lengths and they overlap the joints, that can be, I tried, the adhesive on that has failed. That can be peeled off and I didn't know whether the, the town custodian could actually nail down a strip of molding along the edge.
Quarter round?
Excuse me?
Like quarter round?
Uh, yeah.
Or even the baseboard molding?
It'd take probably three-quarter or, or one-inch quarter round because they're, because of the way it is shifted. But I'm more concerned first that they, they actually, when it's closed, maybe we put a small space heater in there and dry out. Because when I lifted, the, the vinyl peels up very easily and the floor, you can feel it's damp because the vinyl is trapping moisture.
Yeah, you don't want to put a heater in there. You're better off just putting a fan to blow it.
Well, a, a fan, you know, open the window.
Right, if you put a heater in there, it's just gonna warp the board more. But, yeah, I mean, that's what I would, I would go, is put a fan in there, dry it out and.
And then.
Then just do, yeah, put the quarter round or even put some little baseboard in there.
Yeah, exactly.
And they put sticks across it for about $10.
So, sort of moral of the story here is we don't need a motion, right? Because we're just gonna ask the custodian to take a look?
Right.
He, he already looked at it and he said he doesn't have any way of sticking it back down again.
But Jim just said to use quarter round might be the way to do it.
Well, I have, I don't know if, what a quarter round is, but I have pergol floor strips that I thought we could put down, but they, they seemed concerned that somebody might trip over that.
So.
It's up behind the toilet.
We're talking up against, quite honestly.
There's pictures there.
I'll go over to Nancy's when she has a chance, see what the, the product that she has is.
There are pictures on the website. They're not, only one is clear.
They're not coming up, but.
Kind of away from the wall, so.
I think, I think my thing here is it, it sounds like you don't need us to do anything just yet.
Right, just send Tony over to take care of it.
Well, Jim, Jim thought it wasn't a safety issue at this point.
Well, the, the librarian mentioned she thought that there are some ripples that stick about four inches off the wall. However, your average toddler weighs more than it would take to compress them.
Right.
Do we know any ballroom here?
My, my thing is, I endorse any sort of Band-Aid that anybody can figure out at this point and let's look at it in the budget to do a more permanent thing later on.
Right.
But I'm not gonna be able to solve it for anybody with my, so if anybody has a solution, they should go ahead and pursue that solution as long as it's in that sort of dollar amount that's a just-go-do. But I don't think discussing this much tonight is gonna.
No, I, I think the town maintenance person should go and do whatever Band-Aid needs to be done to keep it going to the end of the year and it can be budgeted for.
Reasonable costs associated, you know?
Right.
Exactly.
Can I just tell you, there was an email from the library trustees that you'd have to have a plumber to remove the toilet and then put the toilet back down.
Well, that's if we replace the floor. We wouldn't replace the floor at this point.
But why, why?
Because you can only put the flooring underneath the toilet. But we're not doing that, so we don't need a plumber.
For a Band-Aid, you don't need the plumber.
Right.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, and that was 120, I believe, to remove it and replace it?
We're not doing that.
We're not doing it, so that's zero.
All right. I knew there was another quote that she had in here, so I was just trying to find.
Quite honestly, I mean, we're talking about a space.
Must be small.
Yeah, and.
It's, it's a little larger when these two tables are together. We're talking, the toilet is in one corner. This is the, on the same wall, the opposite corner, about six inches off the wall.
So.
We're making, we're making mountains out of ripples.
Right, so again, we'll just send Tony over.
I would be.
I have to say it, I have to say it. There's been two agenda items tonight regarding toilets. My limit is one toilet agenda item.
For me, right.
So, I'm, I'm kind of done. I'm moving on to the next agenda.
I'll leave the toilet out a bit. I'll.
Okay.
I'll.
Right, we've agreed, we're gonna send the maintenance guy over and...
Yeah, I...
If I can finish, the flooring is approximately, has retracted from the wall approximately half an inch.
That's a lot.
So, quite honestly, what Ms. Wrigley is offering, if it could be cut in a strip about one inch long, it could be placed all along the floor and around the corner, and probably hold it in place. I would drive things out first, but that put down with a few nails is probably all that we need.
Exactly, it sounds great to me.
And again, we're gonna send the maintenance guy over to do it.
The only thing I want to, there is one thing I feel is important to bring out, is what is the source of the moisture under the linoleum? Okay?
Children.
What she told me...
No, did it seep out from an overflow?
Nancy's gonna tell us.
What she told me is in January, I think the toilet overflowed, and that's what caused the floor to do all of this, and it probably, like Jim said, has...
When I was there, she said it has overflowed then...
More than once?
Right, from children putting too much...
So caulking would be good.
Again, it sounds all good to me.
I just wanted to know if it was a concurrent problem.
Kind of not my department.
Okay, so then again, we'll send the maintenance guy over there to take care of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Or we'll schedule the maintenance man to go take care of it.
He's already told me he can't get it to lay flat, so I don't know, maybe Jim can go with him, and they can do it together.
Okay, other business, signed manifest, requisitions, abatements, tax credits, correspondence, and appointments.
I just want to do one quick thing for other business, shoot me if I take longer than...
Not another toilet, is it?
Two minutes, no, I could throw it in, but how's this, I think we have an opportunity to make sure we're not flushing money down the toilet, and what I would, what I would like to do is, and this just comes up because I was thinking about this, because my wife got an iPhone recently, a lot of times for financial things, we wait until budget season and we're too busy, would it be possible, would the board be interested if we directed our administrator and our office manager to come up with a spreadsheet that lists every cell phone that we have in town, who it's assigned to, and the costs associated, to include reimbursement costs, because I kind of want to get an idea of how much money we're spending on cellular in the town, because I'm wondering if we have too much coverage or not enough coverage, or if we're all, if we're on different plans, not the same plans, that sort of thing. I'd just like to see that picture on a spreadsheet where I can dive into it.
Okay.
I agree with that, and now being able to analyze that data.
That's all I have.
You want to start with the, feet down, Jim?
Yeah.
We're ready.
Okay, I will move that we sign the vendor manifest dated 7/3/18, in the amount of $1,455,655, of which $1,387,000 goes towards the July Sanborn Regional School Pay.
Have we got the right one, Jim? I get the...
Yeah.
I've got the vendor manifest there for $52,828.
That's the one that we signed off, that's the one that we signed in the off week.
I see.
Okay, this is a new one, okay.
Yes.
So did someone second that?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move that we sign the vendor manifest dated 7/17/2018, in the amount of $52,828.46.
Second.
Okay, I have one discussion, I'd like to have check 001-8822 removed until we discuss that at the next meeting.
11282.
18822.
Oh, 1822.
May I see the manifest? That's why I know. Okay.
It's the first time that's shown up on the manifest, I just want to look into it.
Yeah.
The yellow one doesn't make me happy either, but we'll talk about that one too.
Well, why don't we ask that both of them be held?
Because that one's been there, and I had questioned it.
But we'll discuss that one too in the next meeting, we'll let that one go through.
So that means that we would be signing a vendor manifest in the amount of $52,628.46.
Correct, and I second that amendment.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign the fire rescue station vendor manifest dated 7, actually, we did sign, dated 7/3/2018, in the amount of $55,389.31.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to sign payroll manifest in the amount of $38,111.74, for pay period 6/24/2018 through July 7, 2018, with the pay date of July 12, 2018.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I move to sign abatement for tax map 10-113, in the amount of $72.90.
Second.
Discussion?
Did you miss the payroll?
Did you miss the payroll? Because that's above the line.
No, I did those three.
All right.
So, yeah, you have two payrolls.
But see, line, line, line. All right, let me do the other one. I move to sign payroll manifest in the amount of $52,148.45, for pay period June 10, 2018 through June 23, 2018, with the pay date of June 28, 2018.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would move to sign requisition 3033, in the amount of $4,650.25, on behalf of the Recreation Commission for the 2018 senior outing. Of that, $1,925 will come from participants.
I second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I would also move to sign authorization to tax collector to collect yield tax levy, the timber tax, for tax maps 3-1-4-5 and 3-1-4-6, in the amount of $756.12.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Did you do the abatement?
I did the abatement.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did. For the amount of $72.00 and some odd cents?
You did do that?
Yes.
I think you were halfway through it and we interrupted.
Ah, yes.
So I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move to sign the abatement for tax map 10-1-13, in the amount of $72.90.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I would also move to sign a thank you letter to Girl Scout Troop 12959, for placing mile markers on the peanut trail.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And we thank them, they did a, did a great deal of work to help the town, so.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Move to adjourn?
At 8:27 PM.
Second.
Go call vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, have a great night.